I'm everyone, I'm now calling this meeting to order, please stand with us, we'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing up with that for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman Large George Payne.
Gracious heavenly father, we're so thankful for the ability to be here, Lord, Lord, we pray that all of our, everything that we do is filtered through you, Lord Jesus. And Lord, I just wanna pray for our nation, Lord, the problems we have with people not being able to get an opinion without it upsetting other people, Lord, I just, I just pray that you would come to this nation and give us revival, in your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for two prior meetings, one on September 2nd, 2025, and the other on September 9th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Jerome, second of Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Next on the agenda, I see we have some visitors in the audience, we're gonna, we're gonna acknowledge, swear in our new mayor's youth council for this year. Excited to do that, as always, we appreciate what these young people do and, and look forward to the, the lessons that you'll learn in doing this and how you make, it's not just for a resume, you may learn something that carries over into your life and becomes a big deal for you, helps, helps prompt you and prepare you for something greater than this. But we're proud to have you serving, and what I'm gonna do is just announce each school, and then at the end, if everyone will come forward, and we'll just do a joint swearing in at the, at the podium up, up front right here. And forgive me, I've had some assistance with the pronunciation of names, so if I mispronounce your name, remember my name is Muscle White, imagine how many times it's been not just mispronounced but misspelled, so if you will forgive me, I appreciate that. From North Point Christian School, we have Arsh Patel, we have Mackenzie Roach, Georgianne Gray, Macy Lackey, Frances Manley, Kirsten Wilson, Landon Livingston, and Emma Kate Luca. And then South Haven High School, we have James Gardner, Cal Norman, and Albert Roddy Jr. Then DeSoto Central High School, we have Javion Williams, Lenaya Johnson, Mattie Kane, Elias Morris, Honor Brown, and Tyler Crawford, so if everybody will meet me up front, we'll do the swearing in. Is this the biggest group we've ever had? It looks like it. Y'all just scoot back just a little bit, I'm gonna get in front, and we'll do that. So we're gonna do it together, so when there's a spot for the name, just insert your name, if you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye. Say aye. In your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And the Constitution of the State of Mississippi.
And obey the laws thereof.
And obey the laws thereof.
That I am not disqualified.
That I am not disqualified.
From holding the office of Mayor's Youth Council.
From holding the office of Mayor's Youth Council.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, thank y'all. We can get a photo of Mr. Chris?
Yes.
I'm so glad we could join this. Emily. Kiss me. We have others to work to the house. It's not rested. I can't knock on the door.
Oh, thank y'all.
Very much. A nation fair. One, a nation fair.
Next on our agenda is an IT contract with TCM Security. City Attorney, Mr. Nick Manor.
This contract with CT, or TCM Security is, provides cyber security penetration testing on city network. It'll authorize the TCM to conduct external tests. Basically, it'll emulate the role of an attacker to check and make sure our security for our IT is working correctly and that there's not any leaks or penetrations that can get through as far as hacking the, and testing for vulnerabilities. The cost is thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars, it does include eight thousand in credits for the city IT online training, so it's not using authorization for the city IT department to sign this contract with TCM. They have revised some of the terms to be consistent with Mississippi law, so it's being presented for approval tonight by the board.
Mayor, I'll make your motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on the agenda is authorization to seek bids for our Parks Department.
Yeah, this is just authorize Parks Department to seek bids for the Snowden Grove baseball scoreboards. It'll be done via reverse auction through central bidding, so need authorization to seek reverse bids through central bidding. Once those bids come back, the lowest and best be presented to the board for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is a resolution for approval of emergency utility repairs.
If this repairs for a utility, or the utility repair emergency was at Grove Meadows Lift Station, they experienced a failure at that lift station in Grove Meadows that required, Grove Meadows that required repairs along with purchase of parts that went over five thousand dollars. So tonight, need authorization to declare the emergency and authorize the expenditure, or ratify the expenditure with Ten Corva Machinery Company in amount of six thousand one hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty cents.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Jerome, second of Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on the agenda is a resolution for IT surplus.
This is, first surplus for IT equipment, one of the, one of the pieces of equipment is below one thousand dollars, so since it's below one thousand dollars, it can be done solely at a private sale in accordance with Mississippi Code seventeen twenty-five twenty-five. So tonight, just need authorization to approve the surplus, the mayor to sign the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is a resolution for condemnation liens.
Yeah, this resolution just authorized liens to be filed in accordance with Mississippi Code twenty-one nineteen eleven for those, for those properties who have not cut, who have been maintained in or cut by the city. The resol, the liens will then be transferred as assessments to the taxes once the liens expire, once the assessment roll comes out, so tonight need authorization for the resolution to file the liens and then transfer those as assessments under Mississippi Code twenty-one nineteen eleven.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler, is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who has a financial interest in either properties who would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on the agenda is an IT agreement and statement of work with Cloudfit Software.
Yeah, the agreement and statement of work is actually for two services, the annual, the first one is the cost of licensing for three hundred, three sixty-five software. Prices may fluctuate as the users, users may vary, but this will allow for the transfer, or for the licensing for that software in the amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars seventy-two cents. That software will be used as a service for the city storage. Then also the cost of implementation and support is thirty thousand dollars each year for three years, it'd be billed monthly at twenty-five hundred dollars. This is included in the IT budget and is part of the software integration and cloud, cloud program, or I guess cloud storage program for the city where the documents will be stored in the cloud for better security and more storage for city documents and compliance with state law.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion?
And these will be signed by the city IT department.
Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on the agenda is Title VI Agreement.
Oh, this agreement is for Melanie to sign with HR, the, it's a Title VI Agreement, non-discrimination agreement, which is required by MDOT, since we have projects with MDOT, so just need authorization that we do apply, comply with Title VI for non-discrimination and the policy statement for that non-discrimination agreement is attached for MDOT. So authorization and conclusion of the minutes for the Title VI Agreement with Melanie's signature.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Jerome, second of Alderman Payne, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is a resolution to claim private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution granting authority to claim private property as presented on the statement. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none, is there anyone in the audience who has a financial interest in either properties who would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is our planning agenda, Ms. Whitney Cook.
Yes, sir, we just have one item on the agenda tonight, Winfield subdivision was fairly recently approved by the board for a subdivision that's gonna be on Sweeney Road, on the east side of Sweeney Road, south of Goodman Road, well between Goodman Road and Church Road. The Scribner's area we're requesting is to place two easements for the subdivision entrance signs on each side of that main entrance you see coming off of Sweeney. It will be included in those two lots, but what we've seen previously when we were trying to address some property maintenance issues, there's a lot of subdivisions that have signage out there on the road that's not maintained, and it's kind of a no man's land. It's, it's not the property owner's responsibility, it's not the HOA's responsibility, so putting in an easement will put a legal identification on it and, and itemize it out as to who is to maintain that, being the HOA of that, so it is a benefit to us. Brian Hill, who is actually the developer of this property, agreed with it, so the Scribner's area is to incorporate those two sign easements on those two corner lots right there, no other changes. I do, for the record, have to state for the Chancery Clerk's Office that it is Section Five Township Two Range Seven, and it's currently plotted in Book One Fifty-Six, page twenty-one, so that is our request.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve item number one on the planning agenda.
I'll second.
Motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Lewis, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report, one of the big topics of discussion that I want y'all to be prepared for, we've been working, our chief building official and our fire department have been working on the, the new most current building code and fire code, and as y'all know, it's extremely important that we keep, that we adopt the most current codes, because we're in the process now of being evaluated by the State Fire Rating Bureau, that's very important in your fire rating is that you have, that you're using the most current codes. So it is our hope that our rating goes from a Class Three to a Class Two, and if that happens, we will have the best fire rating in the state of Mississippi, along with Gulfport and Biloxi. Along with that, as y'all remember from past adoptions, every time we do this, it creates a lot of concern with, with our home builders. We wanna make sure that we don't create any unnecessary expenses or problems with our home builders. We wanna be as, as competitive as we can be, and we want quality builders to build quality homes in South Haven, but we also want them built safely, and so that's why, you know, as time goes by, with experience, these codes take into account new practices that makes, that make the homes safer. So we're careful with that, it's a very meticulous effort. James Gentry, our chief building official, has done an outstanding job with this, we've had multiple meetings with the home builders. I've actually met with their, with their board as well, and so we've got the thumb up from them. There's nothing specifically that concerns them with this, and so on the next agenda, we'll have that on the agenda for y'all to approve the building code. One thing that's of special interest is the sprinkler system requirement, y'all may remember this also from prior discussions. There have been some differences among the governmental entities in DeSoto County on what, what threshold you have to cross from a square footage standpoint to require a sprinkler system. In two thousand twenty, we raised this to make it better for the builders that are building larger homes, but as I told the H, the home builders board the other day, it's extremely important that we protect our fire personnel, so like when you get into, you know, it's a totally different story when you have a smaller home, but when you get into some of these larger homes without a sprinkler system, that fire can get out of control. It's very dangerous for our fire personnel, so they seem to underst, I mean, the builders seem to understand that, and so we're not proposing any change evidently in the general code that's national. There was some suggestion in there that there be a sprinkler system required for every home built, and we don't feel like that's necessary in South Haven, so what is gonna be late before you will be the same as it has been since two thousand twenty, sixty-five hundred feet under root. So the other thing, the problem that that solved in twenty is there became a discussion about people building houses, and then throughout the construction process, I may decide, hey, I wanna finish this upstairs playroom, or I wanna finish this garage out, you know, and so that could change the threshold for them. So to eliminate that confusion, we just went under root, so whatever's under root, if it's sixty-five hundred or greater, it will require a sprinkler system. I think the builders are comfortable with that as well, so we're, we're good to go on that, so it'll be on the agenda next time. And the only other update, I just have to share some positive news with you, so many great things happening in our city, but this past weekend, we had a, we had a special weekend, you know, when you get into the fall weather, it's just September and October in Mississippi, it's the best weather, I mean, let's all face it, January through March stinks here, it's terrible. Then in the summer, it's hot, but September and October are usually our best weather months. So we had this gorgeous day on Saturday, it's beautiful, and, and I get out and ride the city, I just like to look at the city, I like to see the smiles on the people's faces, and people are out, you know, their kids are playing soccer, they're playing tennis, you know, people are out. Then we have the first ever Hummingbird Festival that Wes and I were talking about earlier today. We've only spent about forty-five million dollars in the last ten years on park enhancements, but we think hummingbirds have made people happier than that forty-five million dollars, so. We don't quite understand it, but we're going with it, so. Yeah, so, yeah, what, if we had four hummingbirds, then they, they are, they're, they're valuable. So anyway, the Hummingbird Festival was outstanding, people had a great time with that. And then we had the James Taylor concert Saturday night, and it was, I understand that people had a great time, loved that. You got a legendary performer who's never been to South Haven, Mississippi, obviously he's been to Memphis numerous times, and I wanna thank my citizens that sat up near the, the front of the stage that reminded him that South Haven, Mississippi and Memphis, Tennessee are two different places, and before the concert was over, he was well versed with that, and noted, noted that several times, that he was proud to be in South Haven, Mississippi. And, but anyway, it was a great show, he's a legendary performer, and again, like I've said previously, we would have never gotten him here had we not done the enhancements to the amphitheater. You don't get a classic artist like that if you can't guarantee the gate, and to guarantee the gate, you gotta have permanent seating, so we would have never gotten him had y'all not joined, or y'all done the, done the investment to enhance the amphitheater in two thousand twenty-one. So it was just a wonderful day in South Haven, and so I just, I love to make sure we celebrate that appropriately. And so that's all that I have on the mayor's report, next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on the statement. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is our city attorney's legal update, Mr. Will Manley, again.
Yes, just have three items, we can do them all at one time, we need to, the first one is the sole source of the Parks Department. It was for the, I sent the email, okay, I got the email this afternoon on that, for the fabric from, for the canopies at Greenbrook Park. That will be sole sourced as, with the company, with the fabric company, this is, is part of the repair. They're the only ones who can make the repair and provide the parts for that canopy, because that's the one who provided it.
Where, where do you, those numbers, so?
It's right after the mayor's report.
We're, we're, excuse me.
Oh, you're fine.
We're looking at, maybe we, my agenda does not have.
It's not on the agenda either, okay.
No, it's not that.
Okay, we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Yeah, sole source, next item is authorizing application and the contract for the, credit card contract for the Parks Department. It's part of the recreational sports software that'll be used for, at the Parks Department. That will be applied for and maintained with the clerk's office, but then we need authorization to apply and enter into those contracts for that software, for the recreational sports software program for the parks. And then last, since we are a contract, I mean, since we are an outside counsel, but it's now to be approved as part of the legal services, so be a one-year agreement, same exact terms of last couple of years, so need authorization for that as well, so all three items.
Can we do them all in one motion?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion when we approve all three.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Jerome, is there any discussion on any of those three? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
That motion carries, next on our agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the claims docket in the amount of five million eight hundred forty-six thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and ninety-five cents, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Gallagher, is there any discussion on the claims docket? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Hayes?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed saying no? As have it, the needs this evening are potential lease of city property, litigation by and against the city, discussion for report development and course of action regarding security, personnel, plans or devices, potential purchase of land, economic development, and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there now a motion to declare executive session?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Jerome, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say no, as have it, motion carries, the mayor and board will now enter executive session. Any opposed say no, ayes have it, motion carries, the mayor and board will now enter executive session.